Thank you very much. We'd like to welcome you to Parkway's Board of Education meeting tonight, and if you would join me, standing, to say the pledge of allegiance. Tonight, we're recognizing several schools and departments with exceptional achievements. We're very pleased that everyone could join us at this board meeting. First, I'd like to ask Aaron Cook if he could come down to the podium. He's our Japanese language teacher from South High School, and we'll begin our recognitions.
President Jacob, Vice President Mogerman, Dr. Marty, members of the Board of Education, good evening. There are many people that I have to thank for this grant. Earlier this year, our president of the Sister City Committee with SUA Japan in St. Louis, Mr. Steven Knapp, found out about this opportunity for me, and I was also introduced to Mr. Koji Koniko from the Japan Foundation, who helped to get us this grant. There were several people in central office who went above and beyond to help expedite the process. We were late in getting it started, and it was rather rushed, but I do appreciate their help and their flexibility very much. The Assistant Superintendent of Learning, of Teaching, Learning, and Accountability, Dr. Meredith; the Coordinator of Grants and Funding, Dr. Farinella; the Principal of Parkway South High, Dr. H; and our Curriculum Coordinator, Ms. Nancy Ernest. The students who are in Japanese Level 3 and 4 this year, for the first time, in my experience, have the opportunity to take Level 3 and Level 4 in separate classes, rather than sharing a teacher during the same block. They are incredibly happy to do this. In particular, the Level 4 students who had to go through two previous years of sharing a teacher with another level during the same block. That's one part of the grant which we are funding. The other part will be to increase our after-school activities at both South Middle and Southwest Middle Schools, to give the students a chance to explore the Japanese language and hopefully raise awareness of the program and increase our enrollment at the high school level. I'd like to introduce now Mr. Koji Koniko from the Japan Foundation.
Thank you, Arun Sensei. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. I'm delighted to be here at today's school board meeting to become acquainted with the important figures for education within the Parkway School District. I want to thank you all for giving me this opportunity. There are so many wonderful ways to experience Japan in the United States, and especially in Missouri. One way is by attending the St. Louis Japanese Festival during the Labor Day weekend at the Missouri Botany Garden, and another way is through language study, an area we are recognizing today. Japanese language study is not only for experience Japan. It is also very important nowadays for seeking career in the United States. I would like to explain briefly why learning Japanese language is so important. I have some figures I'd like to mention that the substantial Japanese cumulative foreign direct investment position was in the United States in 2013. Japan's direct investment in the U.S. was the second largest after the United Kingdom, while in 2012, the number of employment created by the Japanese multinational enterprises in the United States was 719,000, and this number is second only to the United Kingdom. And similar trends exist in the present day, was the investment and employment being greater between Japan and the United States than it is between the United States and any other Asian countries. Therefore, learning the Japanese language can open possibilities and careers in the future for language learners. I'm here on behalf of the Japan Foundation to acknowledge Parkway South High School. The Japan Foundation is a governmental-sponsored organization that facilitate a cultural exchange between Japan and the world. It selects top-notch Japan-related programs for its grants. With this grant, Japanese 3 and 4 in Parkway South High School will be taught separately, rather than combined, as has been the case in previous years. This separation will facilitate more focused and meaningful experience for the students, and will in turn encourage future learners to enroll more difficult levels of Japanese. So, can I present? So... So it is my great honor to present to Parkway South High School a certificate of commendation, and it states, "The Japan Foundation and the Consulate General of Japan in Chicago present Parkway South High School with a 2015-2016 Sari Assistant Grant in the amount of $26,852 for the school's initiative to increase enrollment in Japanese language, awarded on August 26, 2015."
One, two, three. And one, two, three. One, two, three.
Wait, 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 please. Thank you. Mr. Jacob has to move over a little bit. Oh, okay. Beautiful. Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you very much. Thank you.
Recognize schools making a notable difference in helping our students become confident learners, who are increasingly self-directed, skilled, and persistent as learners. The schools this evening have focused on our Parkway Character Education commitments. As we all know, character education is the intentional effort to develop in young people core ethical and performance values that are widely affirmed across all cultures. In schools of character, adults embrace their critical role as role models. Teachers work together as professionals, and with parents and community members as partners, to positively shape the social, emotional, and character development of young people entrusted to them each day. Students in these schools tonight feel safe. They feel respected. They feel connected to those around them, allowing them to thrive academically and socially, and be motivated to give back to their communities. As our friend Marvin Berkowitz often says, "It is rocket science." And tonight, I am going to present to you schools that understand how intentional we must be as we guide our students. So this evening, we are celebrating three schools: Belle Reve, Oakbrook, and Craig Elementary School. Our first school to be recognized this evening is Belle Reve Elementary. This evening, Principal Dr. Jamie DeBach and members of her school community have joined us. Please come forward. Just come and stand on both sides, and then we'll shake it a minute. Yeah, both sides. Belle Reve was recently certified as a lighthouse school by Franklin Covey. The attainment of the lighthouse milestone represents a significant benchmark, and is evidence that high standards have been met. A few highlights that were noted from the Leader in the Review Team about Belle Reve are as follows. They said systematic structures have been established. Great effort has been taken to integrate leadership principles, and seven habits in sustainable systems and processes primarily focused through leadership work. Belle Reve communicates the worth and potential of every child. Students are empowered to lead. Service learning projects help those in need, and that is a part of their school culture. Oh, I was supposed to be on that side. Sorry. They further noted, "All classes demonstrate thoughtful connections to the seven habits and their goal-setting." They further stated that the Belle Reve staff demonstrates ties of a close-knit family with their strong love and conviction for their students. Students lead monthly assemblies and leadership days. Students educate parents at Leader in Me Parent Education Nights. During the parent panel portion of Belle Reve's review, a parent stated that children at Belle Reve are competent, upbeat, and friendly. The lighthouse report Belle Reve received after their review stated that Belle Reve Elementary School has transformed their school with a clear vision, mission, and heart, ensuring they empower every student. Belle Reve's recognition as a lighthouse school is considered an extraordinary example for other schools to follow around the world. Please join me in celebrating Belle Reve Elementary School as Parkway's first lighthouse school. Our next school to be recognized this evening is Oakbrook Elementary School. Principal Dr. Chris Shirley and his team have joined us last year when they were recognized as a Missouri School of Character. They are back, as we celebrate them as a national school of character. Dr. Shirley and members of his Oakbrook community are here. Will you please come down? As part of the process, Oakbrook completed a lengthy application and received a site visit. Included in the national evaluation report were countless accolades. I selected a few highlights to share with you this evening. They stated, "Oakbrook is to be commended for the outstanding culture and climate they have created. Their consistent, proactive, and intentional focus on weaving character education strategies in every component of academic and social education gives evidence of a compassionate faculty, dedicated community partners, committed parents, and caring students. The food service staff looks forward to working with their helping hand leaders." The information from the visit highlighted how they enjoy helping students with the lettuce grown inside the vertical gardens, and preparing delicious salads for students to taste, as part of the success for their efforts. The evaluators also celebrated Oakbrook's interview questions used for hiring new staff, and the summer workshops to prepare for teaching core values were also noted. A few more highlights from the national visit included highlighting Oakbrook's Character Council and the many ways that students lead. Oakbrook focuses on helping students understand their intrinsic motivation of recognizing positive character traits. Teachers work to integrate the core values on an ongoing basis. And students set goals at all levels and in all subjects, and review their progress on an ongoing basis by reflection, discussion, and keeping updated graphs of their projects. I would like to conclude with a quote included in Oakbrook's evaluation for National School of Character. One of the evaluators captured the words of a local pastor. He said, "Oakbrook is a pillar of support to our neighborhood. Its students are challenged to grow academically and as leaders. Service learning projects offer students opportunities to directly engage with the community. Children learn tolerance, compassion, and social awareness. The school has created a culture of care and acceptance of diversity that honors all voices. Our community is enhanced by the contribution of its students throughout their educational careers and throughout their lives." Oakbrook's recognition indicates that they have demonstrated the standard of excellence and are models for other schools across the globe. Please join me in celebrating Oakbrook Elementary Parkway's most recent National School of Character. Our next school to recognize this evening is Craig Elementary School. Last spring, Craig was recognized as "The Elementary School for Champions for Character" by Character+ Principal Bill Centi and members of his school community have joined us this evening. Will you please come down? This award is given to one elementary school, and it recognizes school-wide service learning that includes student voice, curriculum integration, reflection, and demonstration of learning. Craig works to extend their core values of respect, responsibility, caring, integrity, and empathy into the community through learning and service. Each grade level has a theme, which remains constant based on the curriculum connections and grade level appropriateness. The service they do may change based on the needs of their community, along with student voice and choice. For example, kindergarten focuses on gardening. Fourth grade, hunger, homelessness, and poverty. And fifth grade focuses on social change. To kick off the school's service learning work each year, the Craig staff has a mid-summer day of service. The last couple of years, Craig staff members have donated time at Craig planting flowers, cleaning up the grounds, and revitalizing the interior. Teams of staff volunteers also donated time at the Humane Society, Operation Food Search, and a local retirement community. For this upcoming school year, the Craig PTO has also committed to making service a part of their work, planning to make some of the PTO's social events service-learning related within the community. In addition, the fourth grade has just established their very own Craig Community Food Pantry to serve those in need within the Craig community. Please join me in welcoming Craig Elementary School Champions for Character. And in closing, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover, thank you so much for the opportunity, for allowing us to recognize our schools helping develop our students and developing great citizens of our community. Thank you.
Very good. Yes, thank you very much, President Jacob, board members, superintendent, Dr. Marty. I guess we'll go from schools of character to really a team of characters here in just a second. So, let's go ahead and start the video. Think you get the idea. So, when we think about our communications, it's very important that we choose the right words and the right language, as to not to avoid confusion. When I think about our communications team here in Parkway, this quote kind of came to mind. In the last analysis, what we are communicates far more eloquently than anything we say or do, and I think that goes along with our character traits as well as the district, but it also, what we are as a communication team is a strong, strong team. And what we have here in Parkway is a strong team. And so, you can see the three new plaques that are decorating the walls just outside the Communication Department. I'm going to tell you just a little bit about that, because you don't win those without having a great team. So there were eight nominations for our Communications Department to the National School PR Association, and eight awards issued based on those eight nominations. So eight for eight, if we're talking about baseball terms, that's a pretty good batting percentage, batting average. I think it's a thousand, not great at the math. I'll check to make sure. So they're batting a thousand in their awards. So let me talk a little bit about the three categories. First one, the Award of Merit. Our team received their back-to-school checklist, one for the video, a brochure, "This is Parkway," a marketing publication, and then hashtag Parkway Vets through their social media. Two other awards in another category for Golden Achievement, engaging yes voters on Facebook, and then you all remember the Growing Up Green campaign that launched our CNG Bus Project. The highest level of awards by the organization were received in three different categories. One, they received for Prop S, the branding and imaging packaging. Another one was for This is Parkway, our marketing material, our electronic magazine, and then our Parkway Today, our print newsletter for our external audience. And so there's a lot of faces and folks behind the work that happens in our communications. So our all-star lineup includes the following people. Not all of them could be with us tonight, so I'll go down, I'm looking at the left-hand column. So Liam McCoy, right field, who works with our Alumni Association. Jan, our centerfielder, who also works with the Alumni Association, the Executive Director of the Alumni Association, and Barb, who assists all over the place, out in left field, makes up our utility crew there. Barb Clark coordinates the oasis, is also Central Office Secretary. And when she needs relief, in relief comes Patty to the front desk, and she's also the Alumni Assistant. So Annie's kind of our catch-all, the coordinator of communications, so behind the plate a lot, Annie Dickerson. And then on third base, if you know where the Communications Department is, you know third base in baseball is referred to as the hot corner, and Julie Ellis occupies that position. The following folks are here tonight, so I'll ask them to come on down. Sin, Derek, Dave, Kathy, Paul, if you all could join me up here. So Sin, we have playing shortstop, responds on a very, very short notice of deadlines. Derek, we have occupying first base. He's very steady, and sometimes we ask him to stretch himself over two departments, like a good a good first baseman could do. We have Dave in our infield, Dave Herbie at second base, our digital communication specialist, who really is steady, consistent, and just a guy you can rely on to come through. Kathy Kelly, the coordinator of communication and media relationship, she's going to take the mound tonight because she's always pitching the new ideas out there. And the chief communication officer, the one who manages the team and leads by example and helps lead this great work and great team, our chief communication officer, Paul Tandy. Please join me in congratulating these wonderful folks. Since Kathy takes all the photos, it'll have to be a big selfie, I think, right? So congratulations, guys.
Well, it's always great to have these kinds of recognitions. We especially are grateful to our colleagues who have recognized us at South for the Japanese language there. What a wonderful gift that is to help us to do that. If you missed the Japanese Lantern Festival at the Botanical Garden, it was tremendous. I think it was over Saturday. The only drawback there was there was so many people, it was pretty crowded. But it was a wonderful event to see what they've done, and we're glad to have that kind of recognition for Parkway South. In addition, I was at some of those schools for some of your celebrations. I want Belle Reve to know that they're the best dancers in Parkway. We really enjoyed that day, and the kids really do take a leadership role there. Our leaders are great, but they can step back and let the kids do things that are, you know, they come to expect that at Belle Reve. And Oak Brook, I always enjoy when I'm down there, love the environment that's there and the way they make you feel. And of course, at Craig, it's always kind of fun to, I don't know if you guys knew that, that's a mustache, by the way. Yesterday was bowtie day at Craig, so I'm talking with one mom there when I was down visiting the school, and she said, "I just laid out the clothes for my kids and a little bowtie there so they'd be ready for Tuesday." So it's quite a tradition, and some wonderful things happening in our schools. Communications, who can say more about them? This year, they've made me one of the outstanding members of that team. While everybody else is out working, they say I'm outstanding. Well, thank you so much. We're going to take a little bit break here, just for a few minutes, and we'll continue the meeting here in about five minutes. Thank you.
We'll come back to order and continue with our school board meeting. Six point oh, additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. There was an addition six point oh one, addition to consent item eleven point oh four, approval of personnel items. Seven point oh, citizen statements, there are none. Eight point oh, approval of agenda. May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, August twenty-six, 2015?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Resolutions nine point oh, there are none. Ten point oh, communications. Ten point oh one, calendar meetings. The next regularly scheduled board meeting is Wednesday, September ninth, 2015, at seven P.M. We will Skype Beth in from Middle Europe. It'll be here at Central Middle School with an anticipated close session at six P.M.
She's just giggling.
Skypeing her in. Set up Skype.
Ten point oh two, board liaison reports. Anyone? We can start over here on my left if there's anyone, if Beth or Dee have something they would like to.
Well, we, well, first of all, we met with Dr. Meredith and some of her crew a few weeks ago, and we were learning about some health curriculum items and some other interesting things, and we always walk away from there with many, many more questions than Lisa has time to answer, but I think we all walk away with good feelings knowing good things are going on in Parkway. And then on Monday morning, I was part of the group that got to meet Dr. Van Deven, our new Commissioner of Education here in Missouri, and I got to watch the children, the students from Belle Reve and from West Middle, talk to her about their character education, and it was really great, and it was great to see the Spark Kids back at it. And for the second hour...
Mrs. Hopper and I were the second tag team, and we got to sit in on a panel discussion between the Commissioner, some of the teachers, some of the students, and some of the business people who are our partners. And it was so interesting to hear the kids especially. The Commissioner posed a question to them about, you know, Parkway is a successful school district, and have they had opportunity to go and maybe see some struggling schools? And what's the difference? And several of them had, and they said the difference is the passion of our teachers. And I just thought, coming from students, that's really a great observation, and I was very proud of them. I thought that was great, and so did she.
Right before school started over the summer, Mike Mertens led a tour of the various different building projects taking place, and Mr. Jacobs and myself, along with Dr. Marty and Patty Bedborough, attended this tour. So we got to see firsthand all of the different building projects that are taking place as part of the bond issue. And we toured, we, we got to see some, all the security upgrades that are taking place throughout all of the schools, especially all the film that's going to be putting onto the fronts of the, of all the buildings that will help for upgrading security there, as well as all the different lock systems that are internal and external to all of the different buildings. Also with the bond issue, we got to see Highcroft Elementary, which I have to say was very impressive, that they have walls and beautiful color and carpet, and just blended itself tremendously to feeling very uplifted and energized as you went into that building. We saw the nurse's office at Central Middle School here, which was beautiful. Looked like you could do some minor surgery there, but, so it looked wonderful, so we'll just wait and see how it pans out with all the activities that take place there. And then we also went to the South High Stadium renovation and saw all the beautiful new concrete bleacher seating that has been renovated to help improve the safety for people that are sitting in there, and the handrails to increase all of that, and some of the handicap accessibility now that's there as well, which is wonderful. We saw the Ren-Hollow renovation, and the Central High dugout renovation we also saw. And at Henry Elementary, we, we were made aware that the new water main has been replaced, which will help with some of the problems that they've had in that area, as well as all the different LED lighting that's taking place. And in addition to that, outside of the, the bond issue, those were all bond issue projects, we also got to see the North preschool that is newly renovated, and the teachers were there setting up the new preschool and saw the parking lot and how beautiful it is and how exciting it is to see that new program starting to develop. And I too just want to give a shout out to all the teachers and the principals and the custodial staff that we met while we were there. It's amazing how much work actually takes place over the summertime in this district. And just to see the high energy level of the teachers that were there helping each other, stacking books, getting things together, it was just really very encouraging. They were high energy, they were passionate, they exuded that on our tour day, and I just felt really pleased that here they are spending their day in the summer while everybody else is trying to finish up a family vacation and get ready for the first day at school, and they're there getting these buildings, everybody was there, getting these buildings ready for that first day to start. And I was just very proud to be part of the Parkway system on that day. So thank you, Mike, for taking us on that tour, and for Scott, and all the wonderful jobs that are being taken place over the summertime with, with all those projects. Thank you.
Just a few quick items that I was able to participate in. Monday night, it was at the PTO leadership that was held here, and that's exciting, is that the Alumni Association also provides a lot of support for that. It was great to see those leaders coming together and trying to come up with ideas and things that they can do in their schools to make learning better for our kids, and wonderful, wonderful volunteers. Also with Dr. Marty, I attended, I'm not sure what we call it, I can't remember, but it was the, at Highcroft, the experiential learning to become teachers in learning. What a wonderful thing we've done there. Not only did we put up walls for the classrooms, but there's actually an observation room there, so these young students, juniors and seniors that come in there can observe what's happening in the classroom, as well as being in the classroom and participating too, but a great opportunity for that. And it was interesting, I think there was only one boy, is that correct? And he actually wants to go into early childhood, which I really encourage, and that would be great. But they were really excited, and Monica's doing a great job there with that, with that group, and they're just excited, and it's just great to see those kinds of things come up in Parkway. And then there were open houses all around the, as school begins. I attended a couple of those over at Sorento, went to that one for a little while, and was down at Oak Brook also for theirs, and got to see, on that particular night, it was the fourth, fifth, and sixth, or three, four, and fifth grade, got to see all of those people together there, the parents there. There weren't very many kids, obviously, but really getting to know their teachers and find out. And I was really gratified, I want to let the board know, the two of the teachers that I met that night are long-term subs working through Kelly. I made sure I asked them, well, how's it going, and hoping that I would get a good report, and it was a glowing report. They're very, very happy and satisfied with the response. When they call, they get a response. Seems to be working out as, as well as we hoped it would. Unless there's something else?
I just want, I just want to thank the board. You don't know how much it's appreciated when you are at activities around the schools as the school year starts. We here at, Desi and I and other members of the Superdirt's Action Team, I hear so much when you've been there, and they're very, very pleased to show off the school, and when you come to open houses and special events. It's been a great start, and you've made it possible for everybody to feel unified and supported, so thank you very much, board members. You all really added some, some special parts to the start of the school year, so I think our citizens need to know that our board, you know, they may be at meetings, but they're also at a lot of activities, especially this time of year.
Thank you, Dr. Marty, and I too appreciate this board and their dedication to, not only to students, but to make sure that students and teachers see them, so thank you, board. Eleven point zero, action items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the August twenty-six, 2015 board materials?
So moved.
Is there anything that needs to be pulled to action or closed? Okay. In that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries six zero. Thank you. And twelve point zero is our action items. Twelve point oh one is the approval of Parkway's comprehensive assessment plan for 2015, 2016. Kevin Beckner, our Coordinator of Student Assessment, will present what he has to the board. We appreciate it, Kevin.
Members of the board, thanks for considering our comprehensive assessment plan. Just want to highlight a few of the differences for this year, so you're aware of what those are. For the most part, our plans remain remarkably stable, as it has been for several years, with an emphasis on our local assessments and our benchmark assessments, but the most substantial changes are coming in our ACT series. For years, we've given the Explore test in eighth grade, the Plan test in tenth grade, and then the ACT to our juniors. Starting last year, ACT discontinued their use of the Explore and Plan, and replaced it with an online test known as the Aspire. While we successfully delivered the Aspire, we found that the results we got weren't timely enough to be helpful, and the implementation was very difficult, so in considering how to get the information we needed to help kids, we are moving forward with your approval tonight, a plan to administer a practice ACT for all of our sophomores in Parkway, utilizing a released version of the ACT that we would score locally in Parkway. And we are also considering, in the future, an addition of that to ninth grade as well, to allow students the opportunity to see the kinds of items that are being asked, to get used to a strictly timed test environment. And in sixth grade, we are also bringing in not a test, but a social emotional screening known as the Engage, which gives us information, that's student self-perception, about their own learning style, about their own social emotional well-being, about their own commitment to school, that can help give us some information that's often overlooked about students' learning. So those are some of the major changes for this year, and if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
What can we do with the social emotional test, and what, what ends up happening with the student?
Yeah, great question. We had, Central Middle had a grant to pilot the Engage assessment last year, and what they found is because it's student self-report, it's just helping us get a sense of what are they thinking about school? And it gives us some early indication about some of the things that might put a student at high risk for dropping out, or not being successful in high school, asking things about their own commitment to school, and can help the counselors and the administrators get a quick sense of, does this student really feel engaged in school? Do they feel like they're committed to their learning? Those kinds of things that can help them get a sense of what might be going on outside of just the classroom setting, and tie that in with what the students are actually showing in their learning, to help get a sense of, what's the full picture here? You know, as Chelsea has been telling us, Dr. Watson, all the character information is so important, and so we're trying to tie those two together and not treat them separately. Like, here's academic, here's social emotional, but actually, in this case, there's academic behaviors that we want to find out about. Do you spend time working on school outside of school? Do you see that it might be valuable for your future? And those kinds of things might help us, it might not be that they have a learning deficit, a student who's struggling, but maybe it's actually more self-perception issue. They can learn it, they can be successful, but right now, they don't see the connection to their life, and we can help them in that, in those kinds of ways.
So then do you get counseling involved in that then, at that point?
Yeah, it was used heavily here at Central Middle by the counseling staff and the administrative staff as they were working with students to try to help them, really get students on the right track, especially giving it in sixth grade gives us a start as they're coming in from elementary and they're making that transition, to start to get a sense, to know the students a little bit better, to get a sense of what's going on with them. So the counselors, yes, used it quite a bit, and Dr. Boggs here at Central said he used it quite a bit, even if he had to meet with a student that he didn't know, he said he could pull up that information quickly to get a sense of who is this student and what's going on with them before he had a conversation with maybe a student that he didn't work regularly with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's great that you're planning on administering the ACT to ninth graders and to 10th graders, because I always think it's, it's beneficial for them to go in in 11th grade and actually know what they're, they're up against. But my question is, what are you going to do with the results of, say, a ninth grade Once you get the results, are we going to do any remediation to help those students learn strategies?
Yeah, great question. So there's a couple of things that are, we're considering with that ninth grade potential test. One of the issues that people have raised is, they might not have had the learning yet that's actually on the ACT. So we don't want to say, whoa, you need remediation because you have this low score. We would actually expect to see some low scores. So as we're working with our staff, part of what we want to do with that ninth grade test in particular, is really about that familiarity with the setting, with the types of questions, and less about the data, and less about the score the student is getting, but more about that practice environment, and more about them getting comfortable with that kind of test, because they haven't had, for the most part, many strictly timed tests that are high stakes up till that point. So getting them familiar with that is really the primary purpose of that consideration. There's also some practical things with that. It's actually a lot easier to do a school schedule if everyone is doing ACT at the same time, and that helps build that sense of, this is a really important thing, we're committing, our whole school is doing this at the same time. So it's less about the score that the student is receiving, and more about those kinds of things, to get used to the process, emphasize the importance of the test, and give students really the best foot forward they can for the real ACT.
Right. I, I understand that, and I'm certainly not worried about the scores of our ninth graders or even our 10th graders, but I kind of feel like sometimes we throw the kids in to the pool without having given them any swimming lessons, and it's sink or swim, and a lot of them lose confidence in their abilities because they haven't been taught.
Yeah, we certainly don't want to do that, and so that is going to be part of our communication piece with staff at our high schools, to make sure that we're communicating that clearly. There's going to be a lot of things on the test that they haven't had the opportunity to learn. There will be a lot of things that they have by that point, they might not have mastered them yet, and certainly not mastered them at the level that ACT expects them to, things like reading comprehension. We certainly hope that they have a strong sense of reading comprehension, but probably not with the kinds of texts that they will see on the ACT. So it really is a communication piece and a learning piece for us. The other part that I didn't mention is it's also a real big opportunity for our staff to spend time with actual ACT items and use that in their CLT groups, and see how students are responding, and where are some things that they might need to strengthen some of our instruction. And we, I think we're very sensitive to that. Wanted to make sure that we don't just throw a kid in and say, well, you did poorly.
Right, well, because we don't, we don't want to destroy their confidence.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do students have another great option to opt out of taking that ACT if they just feel like they're just not up for the task?
So none of our students, even with, say, our junior ACT that we've been giving now for over five years, none of them are quote-unquote forced to take it. It certainly is an opportunity that they have, but we do want to encourage all of them to do it. Some things that we have in place, particularly if we were to go to that ninth grade edition of the ACT, we certainly could say, this is really for you, and we don't necessarily need your score. If we want you to experience that, we can create a safe environment where you can take it, where it really is just about seeing the kinds of items and seeing the kinds of things, and really almost making that score a totally secondary thing.
And I, I thought I read something else in the report, and I'm not finding it immediately here, about, that the actual number of assessments is going to be going down this year?
The number of assessments that we have on the plan are decreased, it doesn't mean the actual number of assessments. Our reason being, we now have, as part of Missouri's waiver from No Child Left Behind, growth measures are required for every teacher, so, and that's not just every teacher, every certified staff. For me, for everybody but Dr. Marty, pretty much in Parkway, all the certified staff have to have growth measures included as part of their evaluation model. So some of the things that we've had on the plan previously might have been, we have them on there because it's an expectation that all say, let's just use art, all the art teachers in the district are going to do this particular assessment. Well, now that's actually the expectation in every single content area, and every single classroom, that they have an assessment that they're giving that we're using growth for, and we have those somewhere else, but the purpose of the assessment plan is really to name what are the things that impact calendars, that impact schedules, that impact budgets, that we want to plan around, and that everyone in the district is doing. And so we've removed those things from the assessment plan because it's becoming part of business as usual, that we're doing those in the classroom, but they're not impacting those outside the classroom.
Kevin, what about teachers and that, their development, professional development, so that they not only administer, but are understanding the data?
Particularly from the ACT?
Yeah?
Yeah. So certainly a point of emphasis, and something that we've been working on quite a bit with our, our CLT groups, is helping them to understand what information are they getting. In fact, I was able to work with all of our middle school, elementary, and social studies teachers at the start of this school year, to go through that very thing. What are some of these data points? How do we understand them? What are the strengths of those? What are the weaknesses of those? And it would be the same process when it comes to the ACT data, making sure that our teachers are getting that, and working with our building leaders to help get that development to our teachers, in whatever way makes the most sense in that building. For some of them, it might be during early release days, for some, it might be during their regular CLT times, depending which CLT they're in, but we certainly want to work with our buildings to make that happen.
Okay. What about, are they informed about it? And do they get the results? And do they understand why we're giving the tests at freshman and sophomore levels?
Yeah, great question. We certainly are going to ramp up our parent communication as we get closer to the ACT. Before every test like this, whether it's Aspire, Explore, Plan, ACT, EOC, we do send out parent communication to all the parents, so that they know what to expect. Typically, that communication includes things like, how are the results used? Why is this important for my student? When will I get results? And those pieces, so that they actually have the very thing that you're asking about in front of them. So we do that before every one of our big tests, so that they have that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Kevin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I have a motion in a second, that the Board of Education approve the consent, approve by consent, the 2015-16 comprehensive assessment plan as written?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, Nikki?
Mrs. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper? Mrs. Mogerman? Dr. Cieratino?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Kevin, you went back too quickly. We have another item for you. It's the approval of the purchased student assessment materials for 2015-16. Do we need any, there's no presentation on that, is there? Do we have any questions for Kevin? It's just the material, so if there are no questions. May I have a motion in a second, that the Board of Education approve ordering materials and scoring services for the following assessments. The Missouri Assessment Program, known as the MAP, estimated at $30,000. The Naglieri Non-Verbal Ability Test, number two, N-Two, estimated at $22,000. These funds would come from the 2015 Assessment Program budget.
So moved.
Roll call, Nikki?
Mrs. Applebaum? Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper? Mrs. Mogerman? Dr. Cieratino? Mr. Jacob?
Yes. The motion carries six zero. And now, we're ready for thirteen point oh, for Patty Bedborough, who will give us a report on recruitment and fund balance.
Good evening, everyone. So, this is kind of to retouch on our subject that we discussed at, pretty in-depth at our May board retreat, and that is, how do we build our fund balances? So part of our agenda this evening, we will go through the history of Parkway's fund balances, we'll discuss why the fund balance is important, what are some of our current challenges with our fund balances, what is the right fund balance, how are we going to get to that right fund balance, our recommendation on how to grow the fund balance, and then our suggested language for our fund balance policy. So to start with, our history of our fund balance, shown in blue on this chart, our last 10 years, so including our fund balance that we're estimating for the end of our 14-15 school year, that was also included in the ASBR, the Annual Secretary Board's Report, so this is not final yet. It may still have some changes with our final accruals and maybe audit adjustments, et cetera. So the blue line represents our actual. The red line represents the 17.3%, which is actually the board, the current board policy. The green line represents a fund balance, an estimated fund balance, that would be supportive to the district, where we would have a world where we would not need to borrow money for the TANs in the future. So that is the end goal, per se, is to get up to that 25 to 26%. So fund balances, you know, we finished the end of 13-14 at just over 14%, so at 14.36%. Our current budget, we had projected at 14%, and we ended at 16.1% or 16.13%. Our current board policy, which is DBK dot BP, addresses the different balance requirements. So the operating reserve would be at 13.5%, and the financial stabilization reserve of the 3.8%, totaling to the 17.3. So what truly is the fund balance for? Well, it's an estimation of how many months of funds you have available if your revenue was cut off. So currently, it, the 16.1% would be enough for about two months. Now, we do receive other revenues on a regular basis, but the bulk of our revenues, we receive from our local operating funds. The calculation is a DESI calculation, so it's not nationwide calculation by any means, but it's calculated by taking the total of the fund balance of the general and the teacher's fund, and dividing it by the total operating expenses, so the total of the general plus the teacher's fund expenditures. So it doesn't take into account anything with the debt service fund or the capital projects fund, or any transfers that you would make to either of those funds. So why is growth in a fund balance important to the district? Well, we really value our AAA rating. We want to sustain and maintain that AAA rating. In the future, we really would like to eliminate our need for the TANs, for those tax increment financing, and we want to be able to address the needs of our capital projects fund in the future. So just to touch briefly on TANs, so next month, one of the items that we'll be bringing to you is our resolution to accept the tax anticipation notes funding. So currently, 71.1% of our operating revenue comes just from that local tax collection. Majority of those funds are received in December through February. Of course, we do have payments that trickle in, in the other months, but the majority of those funds happen in December. With our 16.1% fund balance, we estimate that by the beginning of October, we will have run out of cash. So in order to have payroll, pay other expenditures, and not borrow from the bond funds, because that's not allowed, we have to go outside and borrow money with these TANs. So currently, our expenditures are about $41,000 for the TANs, so about $36,000 for interest, and about $5,000 in legal fees. So in this current interest rate market, it doesn't seem like a huge expense, but we all know that those interest rates may not last forever. The other problem that we face is a dwindling capital projects fund. So currently, we have a fund balance in capital projects, but ongoing expenditures come out of that fund, including buses, so our turnover in our new buses. We also have capital projects that are outside the scope of the bond issue, and of course, it is also based on the timing of the revenues that we'll receive from the Kelly Sports Marketing So one of the questions is, what is that real right fund balance? So our current estimates suggest that a 25 to a 26% balance as of June 30th would help us to be able to eliminate the need for that borrowing or the TANs. And we suggest that, you know, how is best to get there, is probably a goal of a quarter percent fund balance growth each year, and we would implement that in our budget cycle. So how do we actually implement and grow to that quarter percent? Well, three different available options that we have is, one is our recruitment that we have on our residential rate. This is a one-time increase. It is our third year that this is available, and it's our last year. We'll go into that in the next slide. We can also continue to control and to reduce our expenditures, so continue and really focus our work on our Goal Six, and it's- So continue and really focus our work on our Goal Six initiatives with Project Parkway. We also have the opportunity or the availability to use our voluntary rollback on our residential rate, either as a portion or as a whole, but that's not really included in our current So first off, residential recoupment. As we have talked about previously, it's about $6.4 million. It's approximately 24 cents to the average homeowner, and less fees, which is for the commissions and the assessor fees, it would be a revenue of 6.297, so $6,297,600. This year is our third and final year. It's use it or lose it. So we really, you know, my recommendation is that we don't leave that money on the table, that we go ahead and we recoup that money. To the average homeowner with a home value of $275,000, it would be about $124, just on an annual basis. If we take advantage of the recoupment on the remaining residential rate, the ending fund balance is projected then to be at 18.7%. So of course, this would not eliminate the need to borrow TANs, but for that future year, 2016, 2017, we would be able to borrow less in the TANs, so $10 million less estimated. So what does that recoupment really look like to taxpayers? So our most current tax rate from last year with our additional money for debt service would be $4.22.43. When we did the estimation in the spring for the tax rate that goes out on the tax bills, or with your reassessment, sorry, we had a rollback of nine cents estimated on that. So that brought that tax rate down to $4.1331. With the additional recoupment, if we add that 24 cents to the $4.22, we receive $4.37, 37.31 cents, and that average cost would be the $1.24 per homeowner. But if we really take that 24 cents on the $4.13 estimated tax rate, that would only be an increase of 14.88 cents and would be only a $78 increase. So it's going to still vary a little bit because we don't have our final assessment yet. So within the next month, we'll have our last assessed valuations from St. Louis County, and with that, we'll calculate our rates. And I'll keep you posted on what then that looks like for the homeowner. So this is just based on estimated numbers at this time. The only thing that we do know is the 24 cents. So with the five-year forecast, we, I had Brian update our numbers, not only for the 14-15 year-end, but then putting the recoupment into our budget for next year, so for the 15-16 or current year that we're in now, and then looking at that going forward. So we kept our same basis points for our revenue projections, so the 1% to 2% annual growth in local tax rate, and then a salary growth of about 1.5% overall. So that includes growth in salaries and benefits, less the savings from employees that retire, et cetera, and leave the district. So with that, when we look at that fund balance and put it out to the future, we actually, combined with the needs for the transfer into the capital projects, with the recoupment, we still, in three years out, four years out, we still get to right where we are targeted, it's just above the 17.3%. So we know even with the recoupment, we still need to do a little bit more. And with that, one of our focuses is going to be on looking at Goal Six a little bit deeper. So in order to, you know, keep that growth of the estimated quarter percent, so how increased focus on Goal Six, we want to responsibly and effectively allocate resources, including finances, facilities, personnel, and time. So we want to ensure high-quality staff, facilities, instructional materials, technology for our students. We don't want to add, our real goal is, we don't want to add additional expenses without having a revenue source that'll match it. So at any time when we present a budget, we want to ensure that our expenditures are less than our overall revenues. Now, this year, we were very lucky that our actual collection rate from St. Louis County increased from 96.1% in 13-14 to 97.5%. We all know that's not a guarantee because they are still settling some of the claims that go back even as far as 2008. They are progressing well on those, but we still could get hit next year on those. So we want to continue to have a focus on controlled spending, not high growth in our expenditures, in order to be able to take that impact if that happens. Now, the one thing we do have is our voluntary rollback. We currently have .2383 cents in the voluntary rollback on the residential rate. It's about just over $6 million, so $6,136,000 in annual revenue. We could take that in portion or in total. When the rating agency provided us our AAA rating, they considered that part of our fund balance. So it's okay for us to have that voluntary rollback and not use it. But we can use it on non-reassessment years, so in even years when we calculate our tax rate. We could not take it this year because we voluntary rolled it back last year. One of the great things to save thus far is if we have a large increase in enrollment and we need to increase staff pretty quickly, you know, to save off or to prepare for that rapid increase. But as of right now, even our enrollment increase, I think we're about 150 students year-over-year growth. So fund balance growth, just to kind of recap, we want, why is it important? We want to maintain our AAA rating. We want to eliminate our need to borrow from the TANs, and we want to be able to address our needs in the capital projects fund, so over and above what the bond issue provides. So we're proposing the following language for board policy, DBK dot BP. So the policy in itself stays, and we would include this as an additional bullet point. So it's included in your packet as the next board item, correct, for your review? So the language would be, "The district will provide a budget with an operating fund balance growth of 1/4% annually in order to increase the fund balance reserve. This can be accomplished through an increase in revenue or reduced allocation of expenditures." So at this time, I will entertain any questions you have.
And what's our current interest rate that we're charged for TANs?
It is just over 3%. So I don't believe we have received the final interest rate that First Bank will be providing to us. I think they're still working on that.
So realistically, in your budgeting, are you considering next year that that might be higher, or?
For 15-16 or 16-17?
16-17.
So right now, we have it as flat. So we would hope, because next, if we are able to take the recoupment and we will have a higher fund balance at the end of this fiscal year, that we will be able to reduce that interest rate by borrowing less.
Okay.
Randy, could you be clarifying? Under your explanation about the residential rate recruitment, the cost to the average homeowner, et cetera, does this involve a tax increase?
It's not a tax increase that would need to be approved by voters. So it is a tax increase that would be allowable through the calculations of the state auditor office. So the recruitment process is complicated in the easiest terms, and because we're St. Louis County, we deal with a blended rate. So even though some of the property recalculation mostly happened with our commercial rate, because we're a county that has the four rates that come to a blended rate, it impacts our blended rate that then impacts our residential rate. It's very complicated, but we have maximized everything with our commercial rate and our personal property rate, so the only portion of that recruitment that remains is with our residential rate.
So during the assessment process then, is when some of this would take place?
When I calculate the tax rate, yes.
Okay. And so then if we say yes to the residential rate recruitment, then ultimately, there would be some kind of a tax increase to taxpayers?
Correct.
But nothing that would have to be approved by the taxpayers as part of what goes through their assessment?
Correct.
Value of their home?
Correct.
Okay. Because we just approved, they just approved a tax.
So it's still below their tax rate ceiling?
Okay.
And it's, so it's still allowable in their tax rate. So we also, when we roll back their tax rate, because the reassessment is greater than the Consumer Price Index, we then, through the calculation, we roll back their tax rate. At that point in time, that is not voter-approved either. That is just simply from the forms that we calculate, and that's all based on state statute.
And here, you're estimating it to, for that would be about $124 per year.
So, and it's going to vary because our reassessment is greater in our last reports than it was in the spring. So I suspect that when I receive my assessed valuations as of, I believe, September 15th, I believe my residential rate may be greater than, my residential, sorry, assessed valuation may be greater than my initial reports that I've received also.
And if we don't do this, what's our other options?
If we do not do this, then we kind of left $6 million on the table. That could be ours. Now, an additional option that we could do is we could take the recoupment and then we could add to our voluntary rollback, so roll that amount back further if we wish, so that we don't lose the $6 million. So we could increase that voluntary if the board so chooses that we want to maintain the exact same tax rate. So there are options in that.
Now, is it safe, we saving interest?
We have about $36,000 in interest currently that we spend. So with that, right now, we're going to request $30 million in our TANs this year. If we are able to do the recoupment and the current rate, we're looking at, quite possibly, we'd be able to borrow $10,000 less, so that would cut maybe that cost by a third, so maybe it would reduce it to $24,000 in interest for the following year, so for 16-17. The end game is to eliminate the TANs.
The money that we have recruitment, then does that go into general operating?
Just into the fund balance.
Just into that, okay.
We would not immediately add any expenditures for that.
Uh huh, okay.
Our recommendation would be just to grow the fund balance.
And that's really why we, you know, during our retreat, we talked about this, and why we're having this discussion along with the fund balance policy. We are not coming to the board because we want to take this money and put it into anything other than the fund balance to show good faith in raising the fund balance, but along with that, with a 2, a .25, I got to say it correctly, .25 also enhances a commitment. So it's basically our commitment to our taxpayers, but also to those that rate us, the Moody's, that we are really disciplining ourselves, both in terms of the recruitment and then also a policy. And there's nothing in my mind that an organization like a school district needs to do within commit that we are strong, every year trying to be stronger financially, not just because of the Moody's rating, oh, that's important, but also to our taxpayers, and so we're good stewards of their money.
And as we come closer to the possibility of having an interest rate market that it's increased interest rate, it's important for us to have funds in our bank account, too, so that we could earn revenue on those cash balances. Because currently, we cannot invest anything out greater than nine months, with the exception of our bond issue funding, because literally, in October, we have zero funds from the beginning of the year.
Patty, thank you. I know as a board, we try to be fiscally responsible, and several years ago, this board, when Prop R was passed, thank you to our constituents, we did roll back 39 cents the assessed rate, so that's why we have that 23 cents now, because we've used a little bit over the years, but had we not done that, we would, you know, we would have had to reduce the expenses.
Absolutely.
So we will continue to try, I think, to try to be that kind of prudent steward of these great funds. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
It's well-presented. I think we understand the options that we have.
Thank you very much.
And along with that, we do have a couple of policy reviews. 14.01, DBKA dot BP, this is the Financial Management Fund Balance Reporting. Are there any questions about this policy? There's really only one little statement added, which is to add that .25, that the district is telling us that they're going to improve that fund every year, so they'll be looking for ways.
I just have one question. If we, as it reads now, it says increase in revenue or reduced allocation, but could we do both? Could it be an and/or? We're not restricted, the way this reads, to do one or the other, but we could do both at the same time, or do we need to change the or to and/or?
Oh, we can sort of, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on that particular policy? We have one other policy, visitors to district property slash events. That's Desi Kirsch offers. Maybe you can explain a little bit, in case there are board members that read it and have forgotten some of it.
Sure. I won't go into detail about the policy, maybe the background of the why. Right now, it currently doesn't exist, so it's a new policy that we would add, kind of outlining visitor expectations and process, really, with our, obviously, the projects that have recently been approved with the bond issues and ongoing efforts to improve security in our buildings and a visitor management system. You'll notice this year, all our, including our high school, all buildings have a buzz-in system and sort of their visitor management procedures with a sign-in and visitor badge. So we wanted to outline those procedures, make them a little clearer. So this policy was written in collaboration with review from the Missouri School Boards Association, our legal counsel, and also our chief of security, and so this is the final product that they put forward for you tonight.
A couple of situations over the years where we've had some guests, I'll say that broadly, who may not have met our expectations, and legal counsel told us that we probably ought to be real clear about what our expectations are for guests, as well as those that are with us on a regular basis. So it's really something I think we recommend it to add.
So this new visitor policy would mirror our practices.
You two on that, from what I've seen at high schools now, which were just porous, anybody could get into most of them, now it's more secure, and I suppose over this year, we'll learn if that's sufficient or if we need to tweak that a little bit, but it's certainly a step in the right direction.
That'll be part of our security walks and review.
Okay. Any questions?
What do we do when someone comes to use the tractor in the school day, or a field or a basketball court?
Generally, we allow track use during the day. If there's a class going on or something else that may interfere, may restrict that. But generally, we have kind of those rules posted on, so our tracks and fields are accessible today, but if our kids are on it, are going to be working, like our PE classes out there, then they'd be asked to excuse.
So we discourage them from using it, but we don't have enough clout to say during the school day, it's not permissible?
I think we could. I think what we've generally tried to do is be a good community partner, and that's kind of been the practice. So, but I mean, obviously, if we wanted to kind of lock down our tracks or our fields, like we have our school buildings, that would be, that would be a possibility. But again, we, you know, a lot of times, you're going to see our campuses where fields are accessible to, back to a subdivision and those type of things, too, where... are accessible to, back to a subdivision and, and those type of things, too, where, where they're, when kids are outside of PE or recess time, or after lunch, they're, they're going to just, we're going to rely on our adult supervision. So, we usually have multiple playground supervision or recess, there're usually going to be multiple adults around the facilities, too, to monitor that.
Yeah, it's, it's a difficult situation, because, you know, anyone, whether, if it's a parent or guardian, I would assume things will be fine, but if it's someone else who could be hiding out somewhere, and when the kids come out, I don't know, it's, it's, it's difficult, because in this day and age, we know that there are a lot of people out there that are doing terrible things.
Yeah, we, we, we do generally want to assess any vulnerability, but I think that the biggest difference between our visitor management process for our school buildings, a lot of our doorways and entryways, when the buildings were built and designed necessarily, don't have an adult presence right there. Whereas, when we're working with kids walking outside, or anything, there's usually multiple adults accompanying them.
Yeah, I know, we have great supervision then, it helps, but it's just a question. It's something to be concerned about, I think.
This, again, this policy has as much to do with people that, that actually have been allowed in the building to, let's say, come to a meeting, visit with the principal even, or be at events, and their behavior. And so, it's not like we're, so it's about, once they're here, and like I say, we've had a few situations where sometimes people aren't behaving appropriately, adults I'm talking about, not so much students. And we were advised to have policies in place, so that when we need to discipline them or remove them, we really have the backup to do so. It's not like we are suddenly doing this because we do not want visitors, but we have expectations for our visitors as much as we do with our students and others in the building.
And potential to restrict as well for future visits.
Yes, yes.
We've, we've worked on, we've done that in practice, but we haven't put it in policy yet.
All right, thank you very much. These policies will be up for approval at the September 9th board meeting. So, you might want to look at them again before that, before that meeting, in case you think there should be some changes. 15.0, work session, there are none. 16.0, call for special meeting, none. 17.0, next scheduled closed session. The next anticipated closed session will be held on Wednesday, September 9th, 2015, at 6:00 PM at Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. 18.0, recess, none. Closed session, none. 20, I mean, I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries 6-0. At this time, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.